... Ladies and gentlemen of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Commission meeting for October 15th. And please remember, we are taping this, it will be on YouTube, so when you speak, speak loudly and clearly and state your name. Name of the update, Franklin.
The Alcorn Restoration Meeting and Conservation Meeting last week.
Anything exciting that you've gone there?
No, the Alcorn Restoration, they got all their colleagues together, they're going to present the steering committee at the end of the month. And Conservation mostly still making plans for that DCR grant.
Good. Laura.
Last week was the Seventh Annual Montana Board of Crime Control Crime Prevention Conference, so I was there.
Did you not share that?
I actually didn't, it was emceed by Brooke Marshall, who is the Director of Montana Board of Crime Control, but I got to introduce her and then also introduce the Lifetime Achievement Award recipient, who was Mike Fariter, who used to be, just retired, as the Head of Department of Corrections. So, and then, you know, a couple of breakout sessions. But, no, excellent, it was very good. We spent the last day on employee in-house safety issues, so I would like to bring that up a little bit later. But, one thing that is common sense is, any time you can prevent a crime or an accident, the cost is about a tenth, as it would be to react to that crime or accident, what have you. So, it was a good week, good week to lots of learning.
Sounds like it was nice. Okay, we've got a few minutes here before Brian Solis comes in. We have a letter from the Public Service Commission, a notice of application for sale or transfer for operating authority, and the transfer is Ron, Ken's father, doing business as Lemosine Services. The transferee is Ken's Fathers, Inc., doing business as Lemosine Services. Anybody's got comments, they need to be out by the 29th, 2015. A letter from the opposite government, Carl Stead, Commissioner from Fergus County. Dear Commissioner Sealested, I want to thank you for initiating the recent meeting between MACO Health and Human Services Committee and members of my staff and Director Ober. I was encouraged to hear it was a positive meeting, that everyone agreed to pursue an ongoing dialogue about how we can best collaborate and cooperate in maximizing our ability to serve the needs of those suffering from mental illness and substance abuse in our communities. The challenges are significant, but my hope is that by working cooperatively, we can more effectively meet those challenges. As we move forward, I also hope to work with MACO on a plan to expand Medicaid coverage for the working poor in our state. Had the legislature done so in this past session, we would have significantly greater ability to meet the medical needs of our citizens, including those suffering from mental illness and substance abuse. Again, thank you for your efforts and cooperation. My administration and I have committed to be working with MACO as we move forward. Sincerely, Steve Wolack, Governor. This is a list of workshops that affect our road department. One in Hella, one in Billings, one in Sydney, and one in Missoula. See the names that say. From National Association of Counties, our dues are $450 per year. Let me see, there's some. Okay, and the dues are paid with our MACO dues, which is Montana Association of Counties. So, this is just a receipt.
Can we turn on Montana dues? Does it say there?
It does not.
We got a couple emails and it's in our budget paperwork, but I don't have them in my...
I don't either. Results of micropile analysis from the Environmental Laboratory in Hella, Public Health and Human Services. And it looks like the wells there, its silos are all clean, no problems. Rural Montana Magazine, put out by Vigilante Electric and their co-partners.
I do, yes.
And Mr. You workshop coming up regarding zoning, subdivision, and land development lost in Montana, one in Billings, December 10th, for anybody that's interested in going.
And we each got one of those in our mail.
LTAP has a workshop in November 13th in Lowstown, December 3rd in Missoula. And Dana and his crew here will attend this. Enclosed is your copy of the Pipeline Awareness Newsletter for public officials. You are receiving this information because one or more participating members of pipeline companies operate in national gas, natural gas, or hazardous liquid pipelines in their area. See the reverse site for a listing of the membered companies in Broadwater County. The newsletter includes information about the purpose of various types of pipelines and the actions operators take to ensure the reliability of the activity systems, awareness of the potential hazards associated with pipelines, and the steps that should be taken to avoid incidents and prepare for possible emergency. Land use practices associated with pipeline right-of-ways that will protect pipelines and improve community safety. General on-call requirements and recommended safe evacuation practices. How to locate pipelines in your area and obtain additional information on pipeline operators. Thank you for taking the time to review enclosed material. Northwest Energy is the only one that has natural gas transmission coming through our county.
Well, we have Yellowstone Pipeline issue.
They don't have, this is the one when they got listed, it's Northwest.
Is that right?
But Yellowstone Pipeline used to.
Well, it's still, it's still true.
Does it?
I don't know if they transport it or not.
Yeah. I wonder if maybe they have turned to nobody in Northwest?
I think they have a map. I always call it 800 number anyway.
This is a memo from Commissioner Ober to Franklin and myself. Perhaps we can discuss this on Wednesday. This is a very important issue, not only for Broadwater County, and what it is, is, it was from Sean Higley, the correspondent regarding Sections 23, 24, 26, and 7 of Two North, One East, where the river has moved away from the original boundary line into Broadwater County. Depending on how this boundary is being taken care of, we probably need to file an appeal with FEMA. I would suggest that you have Susan Swinley do this, so she's involved with the bombing dispute. Please let me know if there's anything I can do.
The legislature letter.
I would agree.
If we do have Susan take that on for us, of course, there's costs to pay, or legal fees for that. To avoid that, Sean, who responded to that email, or who initiated it, he was working with the Conservation District in the beginning of this week, but basically, he was working with DNRC, who did the FEMA or the floodplain mapping. They are going to move forward with those maps, however, they are going to attach a letter that states that they are aware they have made an error with the boundary for Broadwater County and Galton County, and it doesn't follow a changing river route, it stays with what the lines are. And then they will go back and make those changes. So, Sean has been able to save us the legal fees for Susan Swinley to actually fight this for us.
Good.
Yeah, so I think that's good news.
Very good. Hey, Brian, come on up.
I change about every few years.
Oh, sure. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Good to see you here.
It's good to be here.
I'm visiting.
They had me down for a while, but you can't keep a good artist from down.
Solid Waste Department has had its high points and low points in the last month. We've had some equipment issues. We have the transmission on our semi-fixed, that's fixed and working good. Last week, we had to have the radiator replaced in the canister truck. Talking with the mechanic, that appears that it may be a common failure among those vehicles. We took it down to him about 11:30 on Friday. He called us, he wanted to see if they had one on the shelf. He had it at his shop here in Townsend, 3:00 on Friday afternoon.
That's scary good.
So, if they keep them on the shelf like that, I think they're probably a common item that needs replacing. But, that's the first one we've had to replace in that truck, so it's...
That's good.
It's good. Excavator and loader, we're getting ready for winter. They've been kind of slow starting lately, so we had new batteries put in them, and they should be working good. We may have to put a trickle charger on our wheel loader, just because we don't run it enough to keep the batteries charged fully, it just starts, it hardly starts anyway, and just draw some batteries down, wears them out quicker. So hopefully, we'll get that taken care of in the next few days.
And what does the cost pay?
I don't know what the cost for that is. They had one at Napa, that was like, I think he said a hundred ducks, but it wasn't quite big enough for what he wanted. He's looking online to see if he can find a little larger one to keep those batteries up. But, the only other thing that we've done in the last month is we have a public meeting on whether we should continue to keep recycling going in the county, and purchase a building to take care of those needs. I'd kind of like to hear what commissioners thought of that meeting. I thought it was a decent public meeting. The, what I came out of it with is I think the people that were there are supportive of recycling, they're worried about the cost of recycling them, as well as I am. I've told you many times that you're not going to make money recycling in a small county like this. I think there's counties that will find, will tell you that it's hard to make money recycling in any county in Montana, just because there's not enough volume to deal with. But it does save us the landfill fees, it saves us time in the landfill, they can use the landfill longer, the more material you recycle. So, what was your take on it?
I thought the evolution of the questions was interesting. They started off in a very anti-mode, and seeing a very small piece of the picture, and as they got more information and as people in the audience started sharing what they knew, a couple of the people actually started getting a bigger view, and started saying, you know what, we're not opposed to recycling, we like recycling, we just have some questions. And as those got answered, the number of people who were opposed shrunk, the number of people who were supportive grew, and I think they walked out with a whole lot more understanding of facts versus the emotional hangups that had been very prevalent to start with.
Franklin, what do you think?
Well, I thought me and Mr. Prentice were going to do that study and things, you know, and most of the questions weren't answered to the people that were asked. So, that's what I thought, you know, it was too pre-Prentice. I think just the week before, they were going to do that $6,000 study, and nothing, you know, nothing about that was there at all, in the different locations, in different situations, so...
But we presented those options to the people.
Well, yeah, but like I say, the thing I got from people, they didn't get the answers. There were so many questions they threw out, they didn't get the answer, because there were so many things that weren't known at that point.
Well, we still don't have the answers to those questions. When you're relying on contracted people to do your work, you get it as it's done in their time schedule. I did forward a copy of the proposal from Four Corners Recycling to you guys in email. It's done on a PowerPoint presentation, so it's kind of an interesting way to do it. But their proposal, I haven't had a chance to dig through it and put pencil to paper on it, but John Hahn did, who's a member of the Solid Waste Board, and he figured that through Four Corners recycling, it will cost us initially, if we, let's see if I can figure this out. If we lease, no, if we purchase the containers from Four Corners, for them to handle our recycling effort, it'll be a $26,000 upfront cost with about an $8,300 per year charge for pulling those canisters for us. If we lease the equipment from them, it's an $11,900 charge plus $8,300 yearly for pulling these up those canisters. So, the leasing option is about a $22,000 cost annually. That gives us no revenue back to the department, they keep everything they haul. Currently, we get approximately $10,000 for the baled cardboard per year, that to the, right now goes to BCBC, and the other recyclables that we have is about $10,000. So, it's $10,000 total for the recycling effort that we do in the county. If we do unbailed cardboard, it's about a $6,000 revenue, but that's kind of misleading too, because we get charged to haul that. Even if we haul it, it costs us something to haul it, and it just doesn't pencil off to haul loose cardboard. We're doing that in the interim, while we don't have a baler to use, and I'll have better ideas of what that costs probably next month.
I thought we might have baled.
We did, but if it's been, where it was located, was, the building was sold, we had to move it, we don't have a place to put it. That's why we came looking for purchasing the Perry Building, it's equipped to handle the baler. Probably a day's time electrician work, we could have that baler up and running, and give you a better price for that car. Plus, we have space to store equipment, and that building's large enough to take care of the needs of other county departments, but we're looking for space. I did have Great West Engineering look over the Perry Building, that Forest Service Building, and look at building, a new pole barn type structure. I had a draft of their report, I don't have the hard copy final report yet, when I get that, I'll share it with you guys. What amazed me about that report is how expensive it would be to rebuild that Forest Service Building. Their estimate on that is, by rebuilding that building, we'd save about 15% of the cost of building a new metal building like that. Those are expensive, but that size, that's about a 60 by 80 foot building, and I think their number they throw around is close to $300,000 to build that structure, so... That, it could be done, is it the best option? I don't know, depends on location. But, other than that, that's about all I've got going on. I do have some of the Solid Waste Board folks here today, if they want to say anything, they'd be more than happy to.
I'm sure we might have some stuff I'd like to, information I'd like to put out now.
Oh, all right.
Okay. Dave, I guess he pronounces last night, called me, and that was the next day for about an hour, and he would like to come to our, the next, be on the, what's his name, the 21st agenda.
So, what does he do?
Okay, he's the one that has Headwaters, what is the name of his recycling?
Four Corners Recycling.
Four Corners Recycling. He bought out Headwaters, apparently that was...
No, he didn't buy out Headwaters, it's his own company.
Right, but I think he bought some of their equipment and stuff.
He may have bought some of the equipment.
Anyway, and so we had quite a little visit, and in fact, he brought me a lot of information here, several different things, like this cardboard compactor, this was interesting to me. They could put one down there, the people come up, put the cardboard in there, and there's electric eye, well, there's so much cardboard in it, it's automatic compaction into the container. All it needs is a slab for that. And then on these other things, there's a lot of it that, like I told him, he can come and explain to the, to everyone. If I start trying to explain it, it's going to kind of, probably not the right way, but yeah, a lot of it, he couldn't be here today, first wasn't on the event anyway, yes, but he's been with, I think Maric County's going to go with it. Wheatland, Harlotown is, they just, he just signed them up, he said...
At what cost?
I don't know. Well, I know they went with him. He's got Park County, City of Livingston, Madison County, he's got about 30 different units in Yellowstone Park. I guess that's, yeah, that's pretty much all I'd like to remember and tell him about, and they're all listed in here.
Does he have staff enough to cover all of that?
Yeah, and like he says, oh, and then also in the material, there's two ways. We can get like on the cardboard or the other stuff, the money come back to the county, or else he takes it and just puts it like he calls it, little commodities, when the price is right, he tries to sell it, so it can go either way. But he has a lot to offer, it seems to be a break even point, it sounds like.
I think you, you need to call Galton County Commissioners and talk to them.
Oh, I know now, Jefferson County, they studied that, and they, on this recycling, they just dropped it, and I know the former commissioners here about 10 years ago stayed out, and they dropped it then too, they said it just wasn't feasible.
But we have a recycling program now, that is working.
And I don't know if anybody saw it last night on TV, in Gray Falls, City of Gray Falls had a big recycling plant set up there, and they closed it down about a year ago, and last night the mayor was on TV, and they put it up, building for sale, because he said they probably never ever had to get it, it was costing too much money, the only way they could keep going through recycling. So, there's a lot of information out there you have to, you know, we've got to compile as well.
But you need to call Galton County and talk to them about what Dave Lever is doing for them, or to them. Dave's a salesman, talk to the people that are giving the service, they're not completely happy with it. I'll plug that in.
Another one is at the conference, MACO conference, what, two, three weeks ago, I spoke with the U Commissioners from Park County, they're pulling out of working with Four Corner, what is it? Four Corners Recycling, and they are actually keeping quite an eye on us to see what's going on. They've already toured with you the facility here, I guess they've spoken with members of your board, and they're very interested in calculating what it is we're talking about, so they would be another good three to talk to.
They have switched over the entire solid waste handling program to something somebody will be with 40-yard boxes instead of the smaller green boxes around the county, just because it's easier to haul 40-yard boxes, it's cheaper, and they spend quite a bit of time on production.
Yeah, she does, it's structured to be hauls, mostly pull a pump behind, but it also is that, I guess, loading is compatible with our truck and what they have, so, and he said it's cheaper for us to haul the county, because we've got the truck, and the labor are there all the time, and so anytime the county could haul, they could do the hauling, or if not, they would haul.
But with the proposal we have from him, that's just money out of our pocket. We don't get any of that revenue back if we go with his proposal that he gave us.
Well, he's got, proposal is the way I understood from him, they're...
The one I have is a turnkey package, where he takes everything, he does it all. So, I'd say I don't want to haul his canisters. If he's doing it, he's doing it. We're doing it, we're doing it.
I think if he was doing, he should have everything too.
Are you willing to pay for that?
Well, there's a lot of cost, no matter which way we go, and that way, the county has nothing to do with it. We don't have to worry about insurance, anything like that.
Yes, we do have to worry about it, because the sites need to be maintained. And Galton County will tell you that the sites that Four Corners maintains are not maintained very well.
Well, I don't know about that part, but I can take care of it.
By who? By Four Corners or by us? If I've got to send a guy out to clean up Four Corners' mess...
Well, I don't think we would do that. And these containers, either way, we can haul them or lease them, and there's several different ways to go on them. And the other thing too, like on this cardboard thing, it's, once it's up on the slab, it's really nothing to it.
Who operates it?
It's a, there's this electric eye on it, where there's so much cardboard, throw it in there, it automatically...
You're comfortable with letting citizens of Broadwater County walk up and do that on that?
That's what I asked him about, and he says that they've got them out now, apparently in different places. That's what I like to have, let him explain it.
They're not going to put one there for free.
Oh, no, if we, I think it's six or eight thousand a year rent, or if you buy a new one for 20,000, or a used one for about 15,000. But there's no, nobody, no labor involved.
Yeah, there is. Somebody's got to get that cardboard in there.
Well, whoever's bringing the cardboard, yeah.
What if a little old lady, myself, comes and I've got a bunch of cardboard, how safe is that for me to do that?
Apparently, there's kind of a bin there, I guess.
We have bins sitting down there now, and we put about $20,000 a year of labor in town to town.
Yeah, see, this way you don't, there's no labor involved.
Can you write that down and sign it for me?
I have to.
I doubt that, I seriously doubt that.
Yeah, who's going to take the bail out when it's full and done, and wire it up? That's when they come pick... And then they do, like on this cardboard thing. It's, once it's, it's up on the slab, it's really nothing to it.
Who operates it?
It's a, there's this electric eye on it. When there's so much cardboard, throw it in there. It automatically.
You're comfortable with letting citizens of Broadwater County walk up and do that on that?
That's what I asked him about. And he says that they've, they've got them out now, apparently, in different places. That's why I like to have, let him explain it.
They're not gonna put one there for free?
Oh, no. If, if we, I think it's six or eight thousand a year rent. Or if you buy, buy a new one for twenty thousand, or a used one for about fifteen thousand. But there's no, nobody, no labor involved.
Yeah, there is. Somebody's gotta get that cardboard in there.
Well, whoever's bringing the cardboard, yeah.
Okay.
What if a little old lady, myself, comes and I've got a bunch of cardboard? How safe is that for me to do that?
Apparently, there's kind of a bin there, I guess.
We have bins sitting down there now, and we've put about twenty thousand dollars a year of labor in town to make those.
Yeah, see, this way you don't, there's no labor involved.
Can you write that down and sign it for me? Cause I, I doubt that. I seriously doubt that.
Yeah, who's gonna take the bailout when it's full and done and wired up?
That's when they, they come to you. The only time there'd be a, kind of a downtime is while, well, if they bring it out, I think they bring it. Yeah.
This is a compactor box.
Right, right. That's what I was talking about there. If, cause if they come get it, they bring another box with them. And say we hauled it, there'd be that two hour period, there'd be nothing there to put cardboard in. How long taking the builder to get it back?
But there's, there's nothing in this world that is not labor free. If he's telling you that there's no labor involved, that's not true. There's labor involved somewhere. Either we supply it or he's supplying it.
I guess I would like to hear from your board, and I see that we have some of them out there. Can I call you, Tom?
Sure, yes.
Tell me about your thoughts on all this.
Well, we have a letter before you from my wife and I, that were in favor of continuing recycling through Broadwater County. And the thing that gets missed in all this conversation that's going on right now is for every ton of solid waste that does not go to the landfill, the county saves money. So it always say we gotta make a profit if we make a breakeven point. And since Broadwater County is in the solid, solid waste business, not have, does not have a private contractor, the solid waste supervisor can make a decision if the commodity, if the price of the commodity is such that it isn't worth recycling, because it's gonna cost more than what it would cost to take it to the landfill, we can take it to the landfill. So we have an option. And the county, believe it or not, is a not-for-profit company. Okay, so there's a reduced cost, cause if you bring in a company, they have to make a return on their investment. And the only way they're gonna make the return on their investment, being in business, is to make sure that they, I mean, the Public Service Commission allows a twelve percent return on investment for utilities. Okay, the cable industry I worked in probably made twenty-five percent or more return on their investment. Okay, well, that, that, that isn't a cost factor if the county continues recycling the cardboard. Now, maybe plastic at times may not be worth it, so you take it to the landfill. But we have that option. But if you bring in a private company that will, to do what that we're already doing, we're gonna lose the revenue from the steel and metals, cause that's something the county's been doing for years. And what we're really talking about today is just cardboard and plastic, because papers and those products are being handled by somebody else. And so you have this baler, or maybe there's a new baler, but my question to, to the commissioner would be, what emphasis, if I'm lazy and don't crush my cardboard and throw it in that, and throw it in a, in a big box, like a computer printer box, how is that gonna handle that if I don't crush it and flatten it? And who's gonna be there to know that it's gonna be crushed and flattened so the, so the baler works? So I have some questions about that, and if we need to study some more, we need to study some more. But I think we should still recycle what can be recycled.
Well, I think everybody feels, you know, nobody's really against recycling. It's just how it's gonna work out and, and the cost.
Well, I also saw the same television report last night on the news. And I, I was wondering if it's gonna be brought up about Gray Falls. The thing I got from the city mayor when he was talking, he complained that most of the people who were doing recycle didn't live in Gray Falls, but lived in the county.
Which, yeah, I heard that too. That was to their advantage, because the more this, the recycling stuff that can come in, you know, the better.
My comment would be to the mayor, why didn't you work something out with the county? You had this nice building and all this, instead of just shutting it down and putting your head in the sand, as far as I'm concerned, when it comes to, to recycling, why didn't you work for the county and make it work? But I think Gray Falls probably has a private company that does their, picks up their trash, solid waste, and that company is not interested in decreasing its volume, cause that decreases their income and their profitability. So in our case, we have the option, because we do the solid waste collection. So it's not a disadvantage to us to not take it to the landfill and to recycle. And that's why I'm in favor of keeping it within the county. Thank you.
I think for the, the most part, that recycling going to the county is kind of a natural progression. It makes the whole system work more efficiently. And so Tammy and I kind of got it started through BCDC. And the initial reason we got the grant was to help the county out in saving money, which I think we have for the past three or four years. And so it's, it's actually been a savings to the county. They haven't produced it, or haven't had to haul it off the landfill. Another thing that people miss is you look at the tonnage, but it's a little bit deceiving, because when you haul the plastic off and, and put it in a truck, it's more of a volume issue. You may only be hauling one truckload of, of tonnage off to the recycling. But if you had to haul that to the landfill, you might be hauling two or three truckloads because of the volume, the cardboard isn't compacted, the plastic is compacted. So you're actually losing money that way if you haul it off the landfill, so. I think it's, you know, you're never gonna make money recycling, but you're never gonna make money at hauling all solid waste either. It's a service to the people. And I think the people want, most of the people want recycling as a service, and they're, they're willing to do it. As, it just depends on how efficiently we can do it. And I think this way is, to have the county handle it is more, more efficient. The, I talked to Tim Rousier, he's the, the city foreman, or manager, as most of you know. When we started placing containers like Town Pump, we have one right outside the window right out here, for the hospital and the, and the county courthouse here. R Y Timber asked for one. We have a canister out there for cardboard. We have one at Winston right now, two. I have one at Towns and Marine, they accepted it. Other people have asked for them. If you have somebody else do it, will they be as, as efficient? They have to run around and gather all those up too. You, of course, solid waste would also, but, but being they are in the county, they can be more responsive to the, the people's needs when those are full. They can come get them and pick them up. If you have to wait for somebody from Gallatin County to come down, you know, they may be overflowing. So it's, I think the, the whole system would be a lot more efficient if, if the county could take it over.
And it's worked pretty well so far with you and Tammy doing it, is it not? You've been in on the ground floor?
It's worked pretty well. We're kinda getting tired of it. It's a meal of life, I guess, as they wanna say.
John, do you have a question?
John, right. What is our cost at the landfill for dumping a ton of trash or garbage?
In Emla?
Yes.
Our cost for just solid waste alone is twenty-nine dollars a ton. If you include fuel, it bumps it up about to thirty-nine or forty dollars a ton.
And is there any figure of how much tonnage per month is, is being done?
We generate about forty-two hundred tons a year.
A year?
It costs us, just in tipping fees at the landfill, I would say on the average, about ten grand a month.
I do have another question, and I furnished a document with Mr. Slifka about the purchasing prices of the Perry Building. Could that be elaborated on just a little bit? I went to the tax assessor, the state tax assessor, to get some figures on the building. And to find out what is the projected purchase price and what have you.
It's like any building you go to buy. The value of, taxable value of my home is far less than I pay for it.
Okay, but do we have that figure?
Of my home? I have it. I'm not gonna give it to you.
Don't be smart.
Well, it's.
Hey, hey.
This is all public information.
Okay, well, I ask you a question. What is, what is your figure on buying the building? You told us.
The asking price of the building is a hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars. That's the asking price. We have not started negotiations on that at all. As most of you know, what building is asked for is not necessarily what is the final sale price.
That's because according to the, the assessed value, it's a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. The building's evaluated at seven thousand something other.
Have you looked at the taxable value of your property?
Yeah, it's four hundred or five hundred percent more than it was before it should have been. So don't talk about mine. That will get me irritated.
You look at any, any real estate that's on the market, the taxable value is considerably less than what it's on the market for.
That's true, but it's, it's, it's a bump line where you go to. The building is, is vacant now and they wanna move it.
Who wants to move it?
The people that own it now.
They wanna sell it.
Right, they wanna move it. They're not using it. That's a liability.
It's, it's by far the least, most least expensive vacant building in town, that I can tell you. And the largest.
Where's the Forest Service, just a second, Tom. Where's the Forest Service Building?
Piled on the ground in the road crew.
Oh, okay. Oh, I was, I was trying to mention that. I forgot.
I finally got a fellow's name that knew something about that building. And he, and he made some copies of that for us, please. And so I, and I got a phone number, and I finally made contact with this person yesterday. And he had something to do with the building, when it was taken down for the Forest Service and all that. And he thought that he could get plans for it. In fact, I got a fax him a, a deal today, asking for it. And he's, and he will go ahead and look for these, he's sure that he has a set of plans there in Missouri. There's about four different rooms that have these plans in. Right now, he's, like so many others, he's unfurling. But his job is, he goes in every day, check boilers. And he says, so as soon as he has this information, he would start looking for those plans. And he thought the building was, everybody, this is several years ago. He, he thought it was satisfied, satisfied with eighty-five with eighteen foot walls. But I mean, if he can find all this information, then that, that, which would be great, then a person has something to go by.
Yeah, but it's, it's still not an inexpensive project by any means.
Well, you have to have land to set it on.
Exactly. And the land where we have to set it on is in the flood plain, so there'd be a lot of site threat that would have to be done. I don't even know if you could put the foundations to, to handle that building in that area because of the groundwater. I don't know. That's.
Which area is that?
That north of, in the Cedar Street where everything sits now.
Where the gravel is, is it?
Wherever we decide to put, part of that property is in the flood plain.
About as majority of it is.
Well, it'd be right, where it's laying right now, it's almost, almost taken up that part. Well, I'm just telling Billy I know. I think a person would be all right. But anyway, that's, if we get, if we get these plans and see what it is, I, I don't know.
I'm not a structural engineer. I'm not gonna answer that.
Yeah, and I don't know either. Don't, we have this information, you know, I, I don't know. But I think it could be a break in use of that building.
And we, we would have to go and get a, a building permit from the state to do that? We'd have to build a code. It's not gonna be an inexpensive project.
Just a second. Tom, you had a question or comment?
Oh, there you go.
Oh, okay. Go ahead, John.
The county, when they tried to use this building for a fire department up at Canyon Ferry Road, they had a lot of data that came out on that, and the pros and cons, and what they could do and what they couldn't do. And that really needs to be referred to, cause they went into great depth to use it and finally decided they didn't wanna use that because it, it was ten times too big, if you recall, where it was built.
It was cost prohibitive.
Right, but if the county can use this building for other things, and you've got the building, and you can get it more economical than this three hundred thousand dollar, that, that's pie in the sky. They even admitted that this was out, the county really didn't want it, and the Forest Service forced it on us, apparently, the way I understood it. So Mr. Slifka might have the right idea, find out what economically can be done. Because that whole area out there where the dump's at and all of this is in the flood plain. We know that. The building, the Perry Buildings, got a slab high floor for heavy equipment. And that's really not good for heavy equipment, or even equipment that you're working with stuff on the floor. What it means is your slab is low to the ground. There's no, no elevations. Because you don't do that for heavy equipment, like Perry did. Isn't that correct?
I, I don't know. But Perry's operated in that building for a long time.
They, they've operated heavy equipment in there primarily, and you can't have curbs and high raises going up there.
And that's what we would be operating in there too, is heavy equipment.
Yeah, but you also be doing your compacting and all that, which is on ground level.
Which it, that's the way it's set up. You set the container next to the baler and you load the baler, and it's done.
Well, well, anyway, you go about it, that's big enough to do something.
That's how it was done before, right, John?
Right.
It's all ground level operation, so.
Board members, do you have anything in mind you would like to add?
I would like to make a comment about.
Please do.
How they praise real estate. You know, when they go around and re-praise all property over six years in, in the state, then the legislature meets because the value of the property went up so high that there'd be total chaos on the amount of increase in taxes. So they, you know, I don't know the exact number, but they have that increase, increase over a period of ten or fifteen or twenty-five or fifty years. So that's why that value for that real estate, the state appraisal is lower. It's for all of us to live in the state of Montana. And a good example, we had a flathead area when their prices went out of this world. It went, you know, it went.
This figured.
Gallatin County, Gallatin County, I lived in Gallatin County, and I did very well in selling my house. The taxable value went up tremendously. So, so to use that as a marked figure, to deem that as the value of the property, I question that because of the way the legislature told us to assess the property over a period of a number of years.
Ryan, what is your pleasure on this?
Sounds to me like we need to do some more research. I need to provide you guys with some more information. If you guys wanna hold a, a working meeting at some point, we can bring the rest of the parties involved together and, and try to come up with a solution. So it's at your pleasure as when you wanna do that working meeting. I should have the final draft from Great West Engineering this week, with that Dave's proposal, and those are the pieces that we need to get together. And we can bring the B P M Department and the SCU Board into the mix too, to see what they need to go with.
Tammy?
I would just like to, as one of the people responsible for this recycling effort, because I'm the one that started the plastics recycling, this go around. I got a grant from Broadwater Community Foundation to buy, or to build a building that the plastics are collected in. And then a year later is when we got the grant for the baler, so. And I've been working in it for five years now, doing it, besides my full-time job. What other county job do we have that will actually help bring in money to pay for that position, to pay for, you know, it doesn't make a ton of money, but it does bring in revenue from the sale of those products. That's rare to have a county, you know, job to do that, to help actually pay for that position. So that's a point that I wanted to make. And I, I just would really like the county to take it over, because I'm getting older and, and in the winter. because, um, I'm getting older and, and in the wintertime, um, this winter, if the county doesn't take it over and we still have to do it, I would love any people that are against, um, the county taking it over to come and help me bail cardboard and sort plastics in the middle of winter when it's, you know, snow on the ground and I have snow boots and long johns and all, because it's all outside. It's all outside. And we've been doing it for four years, five years. Um, any help is appreciated.
Now, Chair, if I may?
Mm-hmm.
Um, I, just a couple of comments. First off, public meetings. Public's meetings are not held to tell the public what we're going to do. Public meetings are held to propose an idea and get feedback from the public. How do you feel about this? What are some of your ideas? So, to the board, to Brian, I commend you on the public meeting you had. Thought it was well-done. No, you didn't have all the answers because your job that night was not to tell the people what you were going to do. It was to solicit comment and opinions. Uh, of those who were opposed, there were four, and two seemed to change their minds. It was a fifty percent turnover. There were, I don't know, thirty, forty people there that night. It was a good turnout. Um, the other thing is the building, uh, we're hung up on the taxable value of the building versus the commercial value versus the sale value. And, and putting up a seventy-by-seventy or a sixty-by-eighty building, there's a lot of questions here that, that haven't been thrown into the mix. One is the building and the necessity of the building is not just for recycling. Um, there is a need from weed to have a place for their chemical to be dropped off that isn't in this courthouse. There's a need for a mosquito place to store the trucking chemical. In the, uh, road yard, the mosquito truck was hit three times this year because there just simply is not enough room. If we do not want to be replacing trucks and equipment every year, we've got to do something to protect it. The weed department has equipment that they run out to citizens so they can do some of their own weed maintenance on their property. Well, it's been out in the elements for the past couple of years. What happens is every spring, that equipment then needs to be repaired, replaced, and again, there's an additional cost there. We've got to address that somehow. Putting up the building in the road yard, bad idea. It's already maximized as far as how much room there is for the equipment. You put in another building and we're just creating another problem. So, we have to look at another, another place. There has to be a certain amount of homework done before we just start throwing, throwing things out, uh, out on the table. Uh, the other thing is we, uh, has been talked about with the compactor for the cardboard. It is not the county's. It actually, the, the grant for that was a two-part grant and the baler went to B C D C, which then went to Hans because they were the ones doing all the work on a volunteer basis.
We don't own the baler. B C D C still owns the baler.
Thank you. You're absolutely right. Uh, so, it isn't the county's. Um, but B C D C would be willing to work with the county and that is already stated in a public meeting. Um, and I think that's, that's all I have. I do agree with Brian. We have a lot more people involved with this intimately than we have at this meeting right now. And I do think that we need to have a more constructive, uh, working meeting. And we need to have the weed department and the weed board, the mosquito board here, possibly the road supervisor, and, um, kind of hash through this. Um, so, if you guys are interested, we can set a date right now.
What else do you have?
Um, we've already done the agenda for the twenty-first, but a working meeting shouldn't be during its mission meeting anyway. So, what do you guys think? What day?
I'd say take a Wednesday, it's a mission day, but we don't let anything on.
How about in the twenty-third? It's a week from tomorrow. Does that work?
Does that give you enough time?
Um, yeah, that should do enough time. We've got a couple of other for Monday. Um, afternoon is better for me.
What time?
Um, say after two, like two-thirty.
Does that work for the board? Does that work for Scott as well?
I'd like to check with that, that Dave, that if he can make it. Because he's the one that's going to present all this information.
Uh, should we set it for two-thirty then on the twenty-third? And if too many people say they can't make it, we change the time. Uh, hopefully that gives Dave a week to plan, uh, to be here. What do you think?
I think that's fine. Wouldn't you be willing to get ahold of Dave and see if he's available then?
I can.
We could wait, please.
Do you want to set a second choice? Second, third choices? How about second choice, four o'clock on Wednesday?
Sounds good.
That'll be...
Okay.
This is October thirty, at, at two P M., right?
Mm-hmm.
And then, or at four P M., right?
Franklin, the first option was two-thirty.
Oh, two-thirty, okay.
Second option is four o'clock. Do we want a third or should that be enough?
I think it is not.
Okay.
Unless it afterwards, another date. I guess I give us a little time.
Scott, question?
Um, I don't know if my weed board necessarily needs to be there. I think we've pretty much, uh, given all the needs that we, you know, our needs, our needs list. We've done that countless times, time and time again. But I would be more than happy to come to the meeting and represent again and kind of update on those needs. Uh, you know, just for public comment, you know, one thing that we're often forgetting too in this recycling program is the need for the county to have a herbicide recycling, um, area. I think this year alone, um, they've done over a ton of recycling just in herbicide containers. And I know that that's not even a quarter of what should be put into the recycling program. Um, I don't know. Brian could probably tell you a lot more than I could. But I, I know I see a lot of waste going into the, the solid waste department and going in there or herbicide, um, containers that, who knows whether they're proper, properly disposed of or not. But, um, I know that D E Q and stuff, they, they provide a, a truck that comes around and recycles and, and part of this facility that we're working with them. Uh, solid waste that is, is, is trying to get a proper facility so people can bring their herbicide containers too, so that we can actually have them properly recycled. So, um, I know that other areas are doing it and they're getting, you know, anywhere from eight thousand and up, um, pounds of, of containers a year. So, uh, just kind of something else to think about too in the plastic recycling, you know, that we could, you know, if we get our program going, then we could actually have a place to support some herbicide recycling, so...
And I know some of those containers do currently make it into the plastic spin, so it's a hazard. It needs to be done properly.
But that shows a desire even though it's being done incorrectly.
That's true.
Well, I think if you look, I think if you look, depending on the type of herbicide or whatever, but proper, I mean, probably even if they're, you know, dried out or whatever, it's still probably hazardous waste. So, you know, there is a protocol that you're supposed to dispose of, um, herbicide containers. And I, you know, this being a, a large agricultural area, um, you know, we get some turnout at our recycling day, but I think it'd be well-used and way better used, you know, if we had some kind of program along like this and they actually sat down and put out them recycling stations. And, uh, it's going to take time, but if, if we had the proper facilities, then I would be able to come in and clean them and, you know, better utilize those recycling facilities and opportunities that are out there. But I know right now, there's a, from my experience, there's a lot of them that get destroyed and then dumped for that and the return costs is counting a lot of money.
Yeah, sorry.
Commissioners, I just have a couple of points to make. I'm all for the recycling. I just have some questions about the information that they've given. Half a dozen of us put some new clothes in the clothes bin down there in the post. We stated at the public meeting that that went to Helena Industries and they scrapped it all for rags. They absolutely do not. I went directly and saw them. They pulled those out. They were new. We put them in different packages. We put them in different materials. We wrapped them in rags. They pulled them all out. So, the public was told it was all scrapped to rags. That's not true. Secondly, three hundred thousand dollars for an estimate to put up that Forest Service building is absurd. That's sixty dollars a square foot. I just put one up for eleven dollars a square foot, twice the size of that, on concrete, not the concrete slab, but it's on concrete. Part of it's insulated, part of it is not. So, I question the resources you're being told. I think we need to do much more research and we can do a better job getting the building purchased or out or buying one. But you're not getting fed proper information.
Thank you.
I have a question. Uh, what would you put this building, have you looked at this building they got?
No.
Are you a contractor?
No.
Or do you have the data?
No, I'm a primary rancher. I had, I custom hired some people to come in and put this building up for me a year and a half ago.
Uh-huh.
And it was eleven dollars a square foot. It is not sixteen-foot walls, if that's what they need. It was twelve-foot walls on two-foot of concrete above ground. Part of it is insulated, thirty-by-forty, which was an added cost, but it all averaged out to eleven dollars a square foot. It's not a pole building because the pole buildings, you know, and in that environment down there, I think they won't last. This is on concrete, mine is. There's no poles or nothing to it. It's all two-by-six walls, plywood line and plywood on the roof under the tin, not, not just...
So, it's not a steel building?
It's a steel building. No, it's not a steel metal building. It's steel on the roof, plywood on the...
There's a difference in cost. The, the cost of building a steel structure like that...
I question, does the county need a steel building?
We've got it sitting there. We were asked to look at it. This is what's been done.
Okay, I just question...
The cost to put that building up is not in the steel itself. It's in the foundation to hold it together.
I question the sixty dollars a square foot figures, what I'm questioning.
Then question the engineer to put it together.
I just would like to have half a dozen different bids to put that up. Because I don't think that sixty dollars a square foot is an economical thing for Broadwater County. We can maybe do quite a bit better than that and get one up.
Thank you.
To your other question on the clothes...
Yes, sir.
Um, when we put that building down there through Helena Industries, we were told that the clothes in that building would probably go to rags. They wouldn't take the time to sort through it and their store. What I do is when that building's getting full, I call them up and say, "The building's full. Come and get it." They come down, load it in their truck. Would they do it from there? I don't care.
Well, I just, I mean, you stated at the other public meeting...
Because when we put the building there, that's what I was told.
Okay.
What they do with it is their business. It's not mine. All I know is I'm not holding those clothes to the landfill.
I just, and I agree. I think it's wonderful. I just want to clarify, but, because I, I have quite a few neighbors and people that take stuff there that aren't good and I didn't want to, they thought, "Whoa, whoa, we're not going to do that if it's going to go to rags." So, I just wanted to clarify that point.
Good idea.
John?
I know when we, uh, went down to, uh, for corn recycling, they do, they do do textiles and they do bail them up. I know Helena Industries, they sort through it there. I think anything that isn't usable, then they probably send it to the...
Right.
recyclers and stuff too. I'm sure that's, and I think that was needed because when the churches and stuff used to do, they hadn't sent their...
I think it's very neat.
Yeah. And it was missed and stuff too, so we tried to get them to put that building down there and do it again, but, um... And, and one comment maybe on the building too. I did do some research on doing a small building down there. And it, I didn't realize at the time that there was a problem with, uh, the floodplain. But, uh, I figured a thirty-by-forty-foot building with sixteen-foot walls, two big doors in there and concrete, probably run about thirty-two thousand dollars. But then, uh, Dave Lever did mention that, um, there probably would be some added costs if we turned it into a recycling area that would want higher concrete walls and stuff, which would add to the cost. But I didn't, I didn't research that part of it there too. And on the other building, I've always heard, I've never had any figures, but I know we discussed it during B C D C that, that Forest Service building was, it's kind of a jigsaw puzzle, I guess, trying to figure out how to put together because nobody had the plans. And then, um, at one time I heard eighty thousand dollars, but that was several years ago, to, to re, re, um, put it up there. It was probably, most of it was probably concrete, but, but I think most of it was just more, because it was a jigsaw puzzle. Nobody knew how to put together.
Where'd this three hundred thousand dollar figure come from?
From Great West Engineering in the draft report I have. The final report will be here this week. It'll be presented to the commissioners when it gets here.
Tom, where did your figure for eighty thousand come from?
That was several years ago. I think that was, that was a, just an estimate that, uh, Brian Overt, I think, had come up with when they first got it and started looking at it. I think that was, and I don't know where that was going to be put at, but that was, I'd say, several years ago.
Scott?
I think, you know, we're all...
I have to say, I think this is the last question.
We're waiting. I, I just want to make a quick comment, okay? Because this is part of what we looked into too with weed board erecting this building. Something we're all forgetting here too is, is, you know, the placement, not only with the placement of the building and erecting and stuff, but you've got to come up with a concrete floor. But you also got to come in with your water and electricity and everything else. Well, it doesn't matter where you put it. You're going to have to bring in electricity from somewhere, you know? And, and to drop it, you know, if you, if you put that in where the, the gravel piles are or whatever, you're looking at a floodplain. So, you've got to take three courses there. But you're going to have at least one power pool's length. That right there is approximately ten thousand dollars just to bring that power in, you know? So, there's some of these things that we've already looked at. And then, if you're going to do any kind of plumbing for like getting into water or anything like that, you're going to have to bring it, you know, from somewhere too. Okay, the road yard, the, the, the only plumbing is right there at the main building. So, whether you have it transcended or brought in, you know, any way like that, that's part of this cost that we're looking at when erecting that whole Forest Service building. When you get the Perry building, all of that is right there already set to go. It's got your phase-three tower. It's got your, your city water and your city sewer and all that stuff's right there. So, you know, when you're talking your, your prices, you know, and stuff. Part of this price is to erect that is it bringing in its electricity and your, your water and stuff like that too. I, I'm, I know that because we've already looked at that factor.
Thank you. I guess I would say then, see what information you and your board can get together for the twenty-third. Shoot for two-thirty. If that doesn't work, let us know and we'll go forth.
Okay.
Okay, thanks, guys.
We'll do that. Thank you.
Mike?
Morning, President. I'll try to make a little break.
Sorry, goodnight.
That's okay. This is just a quick break and, uh, what I plan to do here. Uh, this is my monthly D E S, uh, update. Uh, last time I did switch the water copy of the full-mooned stream drain. And here's the application. That is more detailed action than the award. I see no problems on that. As I spoke earlier, that, but here's the award stuff. And, uh, we've asked Montana D E S to give an extension. We have an extension due December thirty-first, but we can also ask for clear-up cover offers. I believe it's August, let me book it. It might not be there. The next item I'd like to discuss with you is, um, the fire department got radios. And we've already, uh, the fire department already got those radios. Purposely, the valley grant, the county has been reimbursed for it. Uh, Brandon Flay, Assistant Fire Chief, the role fire department got hold of. And he suggested that, uh, there's a few problems with those radios. And he would like to have, uh, the count, uh, perhaps to the, uh, interoperability C I P front. He's in California with fifteen thousand. He's had a sign for cap approval.
We start with just minimum. Brandon, will you come up here too, please? You know what we're talking about?
I don't know.
No, this?
No, I should...
Brandon here. Brandon here. I was talking about Brandon Flay.
I'm sorry.
You're all right.
He's Brandon and not you.
Brandon wanted to be here today, but he called my truck, "Hey, we're, we're a little..." Anyway.
Okay. Quick service.
That's right, it is. Anyway, um... Anyway, I notify Capital Communications that we, if we need some soundboard, we could get some soundboard for about six, six hundred and fifty dollars. This is a quote on that. And that would give Brandon Harris an opportunity to, we actually get the- Brandon Flynn, excuse me. I'm all mixed up.
See, I'm not the only one who does.
Brandon Flynn would do that for us, not only for the Fire Department radios, but also for the Sheriff's Office and search and rescue radios already. And the purpose of this, we can only get it for two-year soundboard, so subscription to it from overall. It's just an idea he had. He'd be willing to study this, learn this, and he'd be available to provide this information. The other option we have is go to Capital Communications and they came over here. They can come over here and each one of those radios, they'll charge about twenty bucks to reprogram them with some of the bug sound. That's per, yeah, per, per hand held radio.
How many radios?
We're talking probably about, the Fire Department, I think they have close to forty-seven. Sheriff's Office has got some. This is for mobiles and vehicles as well as handing. But Brandon Flynn is willing to do this. He understands this. I don't understand this software stuff beyond my ability.
Brandon, how many radios do you have? Handheld and also in vehicles?
Are you talking the ones, the old ones, the new ones?
New ones.
Through the grant, we got twenty mobiles, twenty handhelds, and then we have ten additional county purchased mobiles and two handhelds. Speaking to you.
Lot of radio. But I'm grateful that somebody in the county stepped up and wants to understand this stuff and do that. He understands, just, just an idea. I think the money's already been set aside for that interoperability capital program project. And there's just a suggestion I make, but I think it would be, why suspend the money that way rather than have Capital Communications? There's always new programming in common. Project they got from a grant hadn't actually been finished. Kind of happened in the middle of that June transition period. Anyway, it's three of consideration. Not to decide today if you want.
What's your pleasure, floor?
Regarding the C I Ps, Mike is right about the amount of money that in, that is in there. Radios are intimately tied with I M. I would like to have a working meeting also on the C I Ps. We have an awful lot of them. And kind of, I guess, at one time, kind of set goals. What is it that is the priority? And look at it as a whole picture versus piece by piece. I think economically, it'll be a whole lot more wise to do it that way than, than just reacting. So- Sure, we can do that.
Okay, very good.
Yeah, you want us to pencil something in?
Sure.
Okay. What time?
Half past.
All right.
That work for you?
What day is that?
Wednesday. And then the afternoon we'll have solid wait.
Twenty-third. When's the twenty-third?
Right.
I can't make the twenty-third up soon.
Okay.
I would commit with Montana D E S.
What do we want to do the next day? I mean, is this something that we should be-
Sure, if you want to do it on the third, that'd be great.
Does that work for you, Elaine and Franklin?
Okay, now, all we're doing is figuring out this, for Brandon Flynn to take, take, and take over these, why do we have to have a special meeting just for that?
We're gonna discuss the C I, all the C I P.
Brandon Flynn, in this discussion is one, but we have, I don't know how many off the top of my head, a dozen to twenty?
Should we put this on until like the twenty-eighth, Wednesday the twenty-eighth? Or tomorrow, okay, twenty?
Wednesday the thirtieth?
Wednesday the thirtieth.
The Wednesday?
I think, I think we'll get Brandon here back there.
Okay.
Brandon Flynn. Okay, October thirtieth. Can I? Okay.
There's a few there. Is that Wednesday?
It's going to be Wednesday.
It may be Wednesday.
Okay, and the next item I want to give you is a copy of the Deep Creek Grant application. Now this, I have a lot to learn on this. And I've attended the Soil Conservation District meeting last week and I also attended the Franklin Reserve, also attended the landowner meeting. Soil Conservation District has their own grant, which is good. I've studied that grant. A lateral recommendation, I think I've emailed that to the commission. But that's a good project and we need to work hand in hand with that as a partner. They're working on things further downstream. And, and what we need to work on, our grant, this is a FEMA grant in response to the two thousand and eleven flood, is I take our priorities according to the information I have collected from the files and Montana D E S gave back to me. According to priority list from the County Road Supervisor, is we need to work on some county, put in some concrete bridges. On Carson Lane, Liking Barn, and Clumpton Lane. Right now, multiple colts, large colts. And when we have high water, crash colt center, which causes it to back up into ranches, fields, and people's basements. And eventually could watch that culprit out. And they have them passed. So this is a FEMA grant project. And those are the three areas that the Soil Conservation District has identified, as well as our road department have identified. The other part of the grant that we should recommend to kids, this is a grant application, we haven't got any funding for this yet, is to get up on the Deep Creek from the north Deep Creek Road Bridge, which the Highway Department's gonna replace that bridge. That's the near plan. So, uh, west downstream to where the, the creek goes underneath Highway twelve. They put in a bridge there several years ago. This is out there by the Terry Frost property and Carl Smith Johnson's property. And there the creek runs quite fast. It's, it's washing into the bank there. Terry Frost puts all the bridge out there, but just across, doesn't have any, um, concrete buttons or wings on it or anything. And the creek used to meander through that area, uh, up there, and it has been dyked and gone around there. So dyking the creek causes it to run quite fast. What it's doing is it's cutting into the side of the bank of the road there that goes on up town above the bump. And it's also washing, there's a dyke there, it's washing into that. And it's causing a lot of sediment to go on downstream. And working with the Soil Conservation District, we don't know exactly what to do there. It needs to be studied. I think Sean Higley's working on that as well as the Soil Conservation District. How can we get in there, rip around that, so we don't lose that dyke? We lose that dyke and it's gonna flood those homes there down the hole. Oh, we just call that the Deep Creek surveying, surveying area in the old towers. Those are a bunch of little holes. Some of them are trailer holes, some of them are stake holes. And, and that's an area that needs to be studied, but we need to do that in coordination and partnership with the Soil Conservation District, Broadwater Conservation District. And I think this is a good project. I just gave you a copy of the application. I have copies of the price if anybody wants. And this project would improve water quality, and I think it would prevent flooding as well. And that's where we want to kind of focus our money, on that. It's not been proved that the Montana Department of Natural, uh, Montana Department of D E S, excuse me, Montana D E S has that money available in cities. Different counties and cities are applying for that money. We put an application. So it's just an update on that. The other, number four on my list here, tabletop exercise. We've targeted for the thirteenth of November, a tabletop exercise where we will do an evacuation of a hospital with all, working close to the hospital, the empty Fire Department. That if they happen to have a structural fire or some need to evacuate that, the cell we have all pull together and do that together. They have a plan, we're gonna exercise their plan. And that's just our target date. We've got a lot of time on that. And the last thing I want to remind you is the Local Emergency Planning Committee meets this Thursday at the seventeen to three P M. But due to the government, federal government shutdown, they're gonna meet over a piano. So we're not allowed to use that facility as long as they're aware of it. That is all I have. I hope I get you back on schedule.
Good luck, Mike.
Any questions? I'll keep you posted.
So when do you want to separate all this stuff?
I don't know. I don't know. Just before you go to bed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Thanks.
I have one boundary relocation certificate of survey between Hettingers and LeBonds on the east side of the lake towards Confederate Gulf Road. And Hettingers, they went through the subdivision. They owned, uh, this is an agricultural tract and went through the subdivision process of a year, two years ago. And they're purchasing more land from their name, LeBonds. So this square here used to be the boundary, you know, they're purchasing that for a quarter.
Any questions?
Yes, Ben is examining our surveyor and the fellow county attorney.
I will move to support the boundary relocation for Hettingers.
It's moved to tag it in, if we grant approval to Hettingers Minor Subdivision Boundary Redlocation. All that there to say aye?
Aye.
Oppose the same motion, carry.
On the thirtieth is ten o'clock.
I'm the lawyer. I'm here for moral support and explanations. Smart mind, doctor.
Okay, that's what you want to do.
Okay, basically we're here just to convey, um, and talk about the events that happened on September eleventh, you know, discussing if it's about that. First, we want to say, I'm gonna pretty much read off this because I do that.
May I interrupt for just one second? I'm just wondering, I know that I have a little bit more about this story and I know that it involves law enforcement and the county attorney. Can we ask Carla to come in and just listen in to the differences and questions? Thanks, sorry to interrupt.
Now, since there'll be two of you in the room, we'll have five different opinions.
That's right. You're lucky.
Okay, thanks, Sam.
Sorry about that. That's okay, go for it. You know, first we'd like to say that we appreciate the fact that the commission and we subside, stand with listeners. Um, that means that we're gonna, we would like to discuss the events that happened on September eleventh, possibly. I wanted to let you know that we did contact Chris contact, Chris Conrad-
D H P O, louder, I think people.
Okay, we did contact Chris Conrad by phone on September tenth, September tenth, to let him know that we'd be willing to discuss the easement issue. Scott just asked him if we could wait a few weeks because I was having a surgery on the shoulder. He agreed. Um, he must then have contacted Stewart and made arrangements for the next morning to tear up the fence, move the equipment, destroy the trees and land. That's something we can figure out, because right the next morning when we got up, or when my husband got up, I was already gone to work. That's what was happening down there. We keep discussing this at great length and we keep coming back to the fact that we're extremely disappointed in the county official and how this situation was dealt with. Yes, there's the site issue of the easement industry leaving dealt with by our attorney. There's a current lawsuit in which force will abide by those rules. But the reason we're here today is to discuss the fact that the whole thing could have been shut down, the damage that was done could have been contained. It quickly escalated and became hostile and criminal because law enforcement were not allowed to do their jobs. And that was per that county official, we think. One issue, one issue is that once became criminal, the county official related that the deputy said she would not prosecute if the rest remain. Our opinion is, and I mean, we believe the job description, her job description is to prosecute cases that are presented to them by, given her by the law enforcement. We do wonder how a person would know not to prosecute a case of all the facts not in front of them. How do you make a fair determination on prosecute violations of law without the facts? Why would a county official tell a deputy not to arrest when it's their job, their job to do so? And the county official's job is to prosecute at this stage. We're really perplexed by the fact that the official was well aware of the damage that was being done to our property and the fact that they were trespassing onto our private property and she continued to say it was civil, which it was not at that time. Example, Conrad and Stewart had taken upon themselves to remove her personal property from the easement with Stewart's backup. Conrad and Stewart then crossed the both our interior corral fence to place property behind the barn. During this process, they damaged her personal property and the land. The same fence was later damaged from the down. When Conrad and Stewart removed a twenty-five foot Russian olive tree. Thousands of dollars of damage was done and the county official was aware of that fact because it was telling grown full mouth time. Once again, she kept stating it was civil and she wasn't going to do anything about it. She was extremely rude and short with us. We as members of the public don't think we deserve that. I think we deserve to be able to call, even county official just says she would call us and say, "Hey, we're having this problem," you know, and be, be at least polite to us. That's all we're asking. We think what happened was extremely detrimental to our county. We think all we need to ask, we think we need to ask ourselves a few questions. Would someone get hurt or killed the next time? What would prevent someone from doing the same or worse knowing that no one was arrested or prosecuted? What if the next landlord didn't keep his cool, like my husband did, and went after the person who was destroying their property? Or your property for that matter, anybody's property. We have to say that looking back on the whole event, we feel like society has requested, regressed and went back to the wild, wild west. And citizens didn't have to follow the rules, but instead did what they wanted and no, no repercussions were dealt out. We have asked the commission in the past, "How would you like your property destroyed by people, say like Stewart and Conrad? We think they can do whatever they want." I'm thinking that many probably would. I mean, we're pretty protective of our own property. Private property, doesn't matter, it's our property. What is confusing is the official refused to prosecute this time to get prior to this incident, Conrad had torn out part of her fence and that official said to my husband in a cold, "Tell sheriff to do your job and get off her ass and arrest." What's the difference now? I mean, we've got two different examples. We're concerned because we've never, we were never contacted by the county official for information, questions regarding her statements. She didn't contact us to relay that she would not be doing anything with the request for prosecution turned in to her by the deputies. We really don't get the disregard for our safety and the fact that we were and still are in fear of our lives because Mr. Stewart, Mr. Conrad appeared to have no regard for human being or their personal property. For example, Scott was speaking with Deputy Harrison. Stewart came roaring up to him in the back hole. Stewart then got up, got off the back hole, went to step around Deputy Harris towards Scott, holding a broken fence post in the hammock. No arrest for me. And I don't give that to Deputy Harris's, he did, he would have had he been able to. I do believe that. We, of course, we have that possibility. But on September eleventh, I was walking down the easement to check out the damage Conrad had done. I then noticed that Conrad was driving down the easement at the same time. I believed that they deliberately turned towards me to run me over if I would not have stepped aside. When he turned his truck in my direction, it was directly in my path. He revved the engine as if to run me over. Once again, no arrest. We do believe the deputy and the sheriff were trying to do the jobs, but instead appeared to be micromanaged by that county official. And we think that we have to ask ourselves the question, when is law enforcement, when law enforcement is not allowed to do the job we hired them to do, how can we as citizens expect or receive protection for our property and ourselves? Protection, sir, appears to be a myth. And we really feel that way. We were not protected. On September thirteenth, Conrad and his girlfriend and Stewart continued with their disregard, disregard for our personal property. They burned the steel post, the wood post, the fire, the head catch, the trees that they had been removed from our property on September eleventh. We have pictures to show you. Conrad is continually using the access easement for his main entrance to the property. the property, which, as we all know, is not what he was told by the commissioners to do, nor is that what the utility access road is supposed to be used for. Conrad and Stewart keep trying to develop an easement into a road. Lastly, we'd like to mention the dirt pile that Stewart put up on the public easement located in the Menelar subdivision. And my big concern to the county due to the fact that if an emergency vehicle needed to respond to that subdivision, and since the easement is being locked up by the dirt, how much of a liability would be placed on the county to an emergency vehicle wouldn't be able to go through that easement because of the dirt? You know, this, this was greatly upsetting to us, and it's, I don't know, it's very emotional. Our personal property was destroyed. Our, our rights were disregarded.
Um, maybe just as a follow-up to sort of explaining a little bit about the, the interplay between the, the civil dispute of which, I think you've all been aware of about fifteen years, down in the Menelar Minor subdivision. Um, they say good fences make good neighbors. Um, and I think that's true. The county's gone so far as to give an opinion in front of an attorney down Bozeman, Sue Swinley. Um, I spoke to her last week. It, it looks like it's pretty clear what everybody's rights are here. Uh, there's some, some hurt feelings, some volatile personalities, particularly Mr. Conrad, as you can see here, and, uh, it, it's a classic problem for law enforcement when there is a civil dispute. Uh, the problem is, is the solution is not just to say this is a civil dispute, and my understanding is the deputies were prohibited from taking any criminal action, even if there was destruction of property, even if there was threat of, of personal injury. And so that strikes me that there must be some sort of miscommunication going on. And I don't know if that's between the county. You are the client of the county attorney, who appears to be saying things that don't make sense to me, and that's what I think the miscommunication is. No she were here so we could talk a little bit about this. But, um, maybe it, it needs to be that the deputies have a better understanding from the county attorney of, these things are civil, not proper for an arrest, whereas if somebody comes at you with a piece of fence post, the deputy should always be able to protect someone from physical injury. So, I think the most ads are rightly upset. Um, they are handling the, the civil aspects of this through a lawsuit. Everybody has lawyers, and, and that's sort of unfortunate. Uh, generally, I found law enforcement can keep things from getting to that point a lot of the time. In this case, maybe not, um, as far as the easement, but as the other claims, the property destruction. Um, you know, if you park your car on my driveway, I don't just get your car and get to move it over to another part of my yard and set it on fire. And, and it seems that law enforcement and a county attorney in a county that are communicating would be able to avoid this sort of passion and escalating, uh, interactions. This is how people get shot, unfortunately. So, uh, I think the most ads want to be heard. I think they would really like it if they did some feedback to see that they're being taken seriously, um, to be aware of any future discussions about what the county attorney advises the sheriff about not arresting people that are, are threatening or destroying.
Scott, did you want to add anything?
I guess I'm just pretty disappointed with the whole thing we've done, uh, you know, throughout the whole thing. I'd asked Jeff and Chris, Jeff Stewart and Chris Conrad, please stop tearing out the fence until we can discuss this and we can find out where we stand with it. And it was just a smirk, and we kept going and just continued to rip it out, ignore. Uh, Deputy Harris had asked them to please stop. He couldn't tell them, but he had asked them, and, um, after talking to him, he had relayed to me that he no more got what he had to say out of his mouth, and the answer was no, and the way they went again, you know, tearing stuff out, ripping it up. It was just disregard. They were gonna do whatever they wanted to at the time, and no one was gonna tell them what to do. And, in my opinion, they didn't have the right to do what they did. Um, what they could have done as a neighbor, I felt, is come up and talk to us, and since I called them and put our fence back up that Chris had torn down six months earlier, and I told them that I put it back up, and this is the reason why. A shorter pasture, I want to put the cows in there, let them graze it out so we can clean it up, get out any of the equipment, you know, like move that, and, you know, we can sit down and talk. Give us two weeks. She's going in for surgery. Let her get a week behind the surgery, start feeling like she wants to sit around and talk. And it was fine. The next morning, I wake up, eight, ten, look out the dining room window, and there are a hundred and sixty feet down the fence line just getting after it, ripping it up. And that's when I called the Sheriff's Department, and Brandon came up immediately, talked to me while we talked to them, and it was no, and we're doing this.